Hi, everybody. My name is Jerome Metcalf. I'm running for South Side, South Shore, the new Riviera of Maui. Self-positioned for common council. I have a challenge for you, and that is this: Why to vote for me? One of the reasons, which I'll explain to in my many issues and reasons here in a second, is I have a challenge for myself and to the voters with proof of commitment to you. I plan on losing 10 pounds by August 9th. And on each pound lost, for my goal, which is to make the runoff of the 9th of August, primary final, for the two South Side common council seats. So I will be against someone, probably Don Koch, in November. It's called "Pounds of Commitment." It will be based on the total lost of my pounds will be taken off my first year's salary as a commitment to budgetary responsibility and fiscal responsibility to my citizens and to the constituents in which I run for, and at the Maui's budget cost entirely for Maui, to be able to subtract this, and I will donate this money to a charity or back into the government for a discount. This saves the taxpayers, I project on $65,000, roughly $10,000 to $12,000. I'm already at seven pounds lost, and I have a week left to go. I really promise I'm doing this, and it gives some incentive for you to look at me. Number two, I challenged Don Koch to a debate. I'd like to do so by next Wednesday. The newspaper, Kihei Community Association, could set this up by Wednesday at the community center in Kihei. I think that the people have the right, as with other stuff written in the paper, I have the right to confront my incumbent, and I have things to bring up in which I shall apply. I wanted to bring up a face and faces of different things in my life, so you put a picture to this of me running and who I am. This is my father and me when I had my little girl Noel, who was born in Milwaukee and has visited many times. Also, my little niece was born in Hannah, so we call her Hannah. You all know my father as the great Jerome E. Metcalf. There was a misprint in the Maui reporter that was brought to the South Side of putting my father in there, who's been dead for 10 years. I wanted to clarify that. Also, there was a misconception that I've been non-accessible to the press or anybody else. I've had 1,200 and some calls, I've had 800 and some emails, and 3,000 people contact my Facebook account. Everybody seems to be able to get a hold of me, and if you go to the Spending Commission and the Commission for Elections in Maui, my phone number or address is there. Wanted to bring that to it. I am avidly looking for interviews. I have avidly not approached anybody for endorsements or for donations until I make the final through the primary. I, at this time here, have donated my own personal money to producing signs and everything like that to bring my name out and to bring reference to you already voting for me three and a half years ago, going back seven years, when the Maui Times and Maui News made my alehouse number one for four times around in Maui News and Maui Times. So that's eight different times you voted for me, four for Maui Times, four for Maui News, in which you voted me the number one sports bar, and then also voted me the number one sports food for Sunday brunch, etc. Bring that up. This is me running a marathon in Milwaukee, in which I placed in the top 200 in the Al McGuire Alzheimer Run. I have many things to show you real quickly of my father. I loved him a lot. He owned a Rusty Harpoon in Whalers Village in Lahaina, and also propagated the expense of the Metcalf estate to buy the old Scissor Building, which became the original alehouse in which my dad developed, etc. This is my brother Scott T. Metcalf, Scooter. A lot of people know him. He's in every sporting event on the island. He's dear to me. He supports me. He's been through a lot with me. I love him a lot, and I just wanted to bring his picture out and show it to everybody. I wanted to bring you some reference so you can put everything in perspective here in that I painted the alehouse green and yellow to win the Super Bowl and predicted it four months before they went to the Super Bowl. I'm a Packer fan. I suggest you all look into good old Aaron Rodgers and the returning team for this year's Super Bowl. Getting excited for football. I'm regretful to say that the sports page in Kihei has closed through Misha, regrettably. Another economic condition and greed from the landlords trying to take too much and not give me enough back for the business person to make money. One of my reasons in which I'm bringing up here is to create the alehouse, to create Metcalf and Associates, Metcalf Enterprises. When I was made president as Tiger Metcalf of the alehouse and took over operations with my brother as he created the new logos, which have now been changed by Brad Sundin, respectfully, doing a great job down there. We had the plans and everything laid out for the man for expansions and everything, but were hindered by Alexander Baldwin's redress towards us in the failure to put air conditioning in a building which they sold me a lease to and told me they would air-condition it. After 18 years of ownership, the air conditioners became solid blocks of salt, and they were useless, and they would not replace them, i.e. I sold it on Craigslist two weeks after the threat of leaving. I don't tolerate insubordination or incompetence or deviation or impediment to business, creating business, or succession of business, or in line. What it takes to make it in this business: Entrepreneurialism, drive, ingenuity, and innovativeness, which we can bring out. The mayor's got the program set up already. We've just got to bring it to a little bit more sharpened pencil, and that is with an incubator system and an incentive with mentorism. With the position, if you can see this, on the GMO initiative, it will appear in the November ballot, the council defers. As they went into private council, if you watch the videotape of 7:24, anywhere from, I believe, 8:00 or 9:00 in the morning until 5:00 or 5:30 when they adjourned, the scientists from Shaka were brought in, which were world authorities. Also, there was the median neutral party that's supposed to be governing everything, the USDA. If you understood what you seen, or if you don't understand what you seen, go to Aku and watch it once or twice. You'll be shocked to know that we're at 3,000 times the normal level. But we don't know what the normal level is because there's not been allegedly human tests or experiments done. But what we did find out watching the program was this: In that the Monsanto experiments, which are valid, the only problem is the amount of toxins that are created through pesticides, herbicides, and carcinogens, which are produced in mixing of compounds, which are deadly and plug the system or irritate and create cancerous tumors, birth defects, etc. 56 of the top 57 countries in the world produced and surveyed through the UN forbid Monsanto to enter their countries. It's not even a matter of questioning. They're forbid. Now, I've been to Africa, I have gone to South America and seen the birth defects by these of the cranial splits, the tumors facial, one or two different abnormalities of the lungs, heart, etc. It's devastating what can happen when this goes awry. Here's what was found out on the 24th, in that these experiments, we are the experiment. There has been no human studies. We are the human study. Out in the middle of the Pacific where we can't do nothing if it goes awry, so they can contain, okay? What I mean by this is simply, there's a Petri dish with experiments going on for the helpfulness of growing more crops. But the problem is, is that the downwind mixture of containing and keeping the soils at barrenness so they can grow according to their mean experimented protocols simply says this, that the downwind effect of 30 different sprays of herbicide, 80 different types of Roundup put on it for the pesticide, i.e. herbicide and/or weed killer, whatever you want to call it, the combinations are at 1 trillion times 30. Out of that, 91% of them are toxic, the other 9% of them are, we don't know. Are they good for us or bad for us? I don't want to gamble on those odds. That's where I'm coming with this of the seriousness. Here's where I also come with it. Our excellent mayor has said this, he believes in GMOs are not harmful. I believe once he understands that the facts and stuff like that, he'll look into it. But I don't see the mayor living downwind where my constituents are or Don Koch's constituents are. I believe that Don Koch was elected two years ago, and I voted him in. He was elected a term before that. Unfortunately for Mr. Koch is that this comes under betrayal. In that what I mean by this is that he had the business of, once this initiative was brought to vice by Shaka and brought to be a matter of fact, the problem is, is that he had a job to look into it at that time there and sound the alarm to protect his downwind constituents of Kihei, Maquinta, and the great Wailea and Mahalea. If you look at the wind, you look at the currents, you look at everything going down, you know what? 2 o'clock every day, we take on at least a 20 mile an hour wind gust. Anything laying in the soil dormant, anything chilled in the soil, anything cut, and God help us, when you burn it, you produce another 30 times of 80 chemicals burning, incinerating into another compound which is completely toxic. I look at it as akin to what these idiots do with charcoal fluid. Did anybody watch the movie Breaking Bad of smoking meth, etc., smoking something like that and ingesting it? It's toxic and poisonous. That's what happens when you burn up stuff. You're smoking garbage, okay? Or you're smoking chemicals that are so lethal it's ridiculous. I've seen the effects in South America and in Africa. That said, I don't know what else to do but to call for what I would ask for simply is just a quick debate. I want your vote. I want you to understand I'm willing to go to bat for you. But I'm not willing to tolerate someone supporting what has been aligned as basically an experiment. And I don't want to be an experiment because I was not when I jumped off the plane or given a contract by Monsanto or the Sugar Company to ingest this stuff into being part of an experiment. The average cost to be in an experiment at this height would be around $100,000. No one was offered $100,000 to $1 million that I've talked to. I was not. So now that we know that there is medical and health issues involved in this, I suggest that we go after personal suit, which I will file because I suffer from COPD, etc., have two inhalers. I use medication, all certified by Kaiser. The problem with what I've just said here is that many of you have other effects of the bursts and stuff like that that we have unrecorded, but we can pull the records from the hospitals, etc. Hi, everybody. I wanted to give you a different impression of me besides what you're either seeing before or after as we made the cuts. At this time here, I wanted you to see how calm, cool, collective I am. I do look suave, or whatever you want to say with my sunglasses on. I want you to know that I'm a real adventurist. I'm a conservationist. I love water, sports. I do paddle boarding. I swim a lot. I fish a lot. I've even attempted to do some hunting on this island for the Axis deer, which is another issue I'm running on because many of the constituents of this area of South Kihei have called me regarding the golf courses of these big jackrabbits, which are really the Axis deer out there, which we've got a population out of control, eating plants, etc. The farmers up country were thinking about having me possibly bring something to the Conservation League, etc., for a longer extended hunting season to eliminate some of these pests. They're eating an enormous amount of our crops in which we depend on for sustainability to our farmers. I wanted to give you a little insight on the shirts that I went and got made. And I don't know if Jason could get this in here. I'm trying to be calm, cool, collective, but it's such a serious issue which, if you even get the chance to see the airing of this. And this is my t-shirt, what's on the front and back to some of them for some of the gentlemen that are, you know, be out signing. I'm running my campaign electronically, basically, throughout this timeframe so that you can see that at the end I will come out and I will address some issues and be real pointed out. Hi, everybody. Hi, Katie. I love you. That's my beautiful girlfriend. Wanted to bring up an issue too, or some facts. My girlfriend ran one of the largest design operations in Hollywood, California, in which she designed bikinis, and she had her bikinis in Sports Illustrated four times and had the center issue twice, and has been accredited, if you go to Katie or Kathy G. Theralt. It's T-H-E-R-A-L-T. If you look her up on Facebook or Google her, you'll see how successful she is. She got taken to the cleaners in California, and her business collapsed due to some embolism. I've been taking over the brand. We will rebrand it, re... I'm sorry, rebrand it here in Maui. So as I'm trying to point out to you, you can create businesses very easily or find old ones and rehab them. That's one of the things that I'm really good at. So you'll be seeing that line come out, etc., like this, as Metcalf Enterprises, an investment firm that looks at different businesses. I think it's really important that you understand the aptitude which I have. These librarians over at the Kihei library, you have to understand that the issues in which we have, which I'm going to compound upon in a further interview with Jason that'll be fed into this, I will explicitly go into the reasons for you to vote for Jerome Metcalf. I had to take this preemptive strike to show you me, what I care about, and what's dear to my heart. I watched Don Koch's videos of what was on the candidates, etc., of being in a calling. With my family and myself, this is a calling. I've had a grandfather that's been elected in Waukesha, Wisconsin for seven terms, three-year terms as supervisor for all fiscal responsibility and hiring everybody in Waukesha County to producing one of the wealthiest counties in history in the United States, a suburb of Waukesha, Wisconsin, in the county of Waukesha, a suburb of Milwaukee, Wisconsin. My uncle was a mayor of a beautiful, beautiful suburb of Madison, Wisconsin, near the university called Manona Grove. Manona? He was there for six terms as the mayor, as Mr. Akala is. So I understand the stresses and the deals he has to make and how to get on his own program so he can show us what's in his heart. Our mayor, Mr. Akala, has got a beautiful program. Now that he's got us on the right track with budget restraint and accountability, and with help from our governor, he's got his things in line in that he took us from $750 million in the red with furloughs in different departments to having everybody working, a raise, the three departments he borrowed money from paid back, and we're sitting at $184 million surplus. If you don't vote for these two men, I don't know if you have the ability to vote. And when you vote for Jerome Metcalf as a new voice for your choice, I look for competence. You must be aggressive on the issues so you can spread the word of what I'm preaching. I'm not going to preach anything unless it's fact. That's why you see a bunch of papers that Jason's here with me. I culled a paper and cut articles out so I know what I'm talking about on point. If I'm wrong, it's because the Maui News or Maui Times or the Maui Reporter printed it or reported it wrong. Because I also come to the University of Hawaii in Maui, Kahului here, and go through it with professors of economics, environmentalists, and also sociologists so I know your opinions and how to shape that opinion on what's mattered with this county. If you don't come at it at a straight point and honest, and you don't feel what the people are feeling and how to change and how to adapt to change, you can't sociologically affect the people from your heart. That's the difference between Jerry Metcalf, Don Koch, Robin Knox, and John Fitch Patrick. I ask you to vote for me. I humbly ask you to take notice of what's going on. This is the most important election in our lifetime on this island. And I swear to God, I'm actually shaking right now talking to you about this, not because I'm nervous, because of these issues right here. This is not going to affect Maui. This is not going to affect Maui. There's 600 people involved that possibly could lose their jobs. Out of that 600 people versus when I had the alehouse, I hired over 3,100 people and affected 7,500 people, not including what we hired at the Rusty Harpoon, etc. And no one came to my rescue, or my dad's rescue, or the 143 other people that I know that had operations in restaurants, foods and hospitality, travel and tourism that went bankrupt on this island and had to pack their bags and barely had enough money to get off the island. And no one came to our rescue, except the mayor with his economic initiatives, which you guys had a hard time adapting. But he's on track. I have planned to add something in my initiatives which I have on here. Now, what's going on with this initiative with the GMO here and the 600 people that'll be affected? Okay, that's one quarter of 1% of the entire population that works on this island and less than a quarter of 1% of the population of this county. So if you understand 600 versus 100... I'm sorry, 600 jobs versus 38,500 jobs right now that are going. By the way, I wanted to understand through the unemployment office what goes on in this county. We lose, make or break, up or down, 500 to 600 jobs every month. That's what goes on at the unemployment office. So 600 jobs by Monsanto. You'll be compensated for. Jerome Metcalf, I'm sure the mayor, I'm sure our common council people that'll be voted in will take care of this, retooling us. In that, I'm at the university right now. Ask the professors. Ask the people at the financial aid office. Ask everybody. They're here to help you. You can retool yourself fast. I never thought that I would have to take the 36 certificates I have, the 12 licenses I hold, and regroup and retool to the modern future because I thought I had it made, until I ran into problems with the Metcalf estate and Metcalf Trust, something that's been in the newspaper and an issue of me waiting, basically, for my inheritance. I was self-made. I have money in the bank. I'm releasing that in hard form, which will be on the elect Jerome Metcalf or elect Jerry Metcalf.org. So you'll see complete disclosure, and also my financial disclosure, and also my endorsements, in which I'll be putting forward on this videotape at the end of it. We're at the university right now, and I wanted you to know that I owe the University of Hawaii, Maui, a lot of respect. My professors have personally handled me as a character or a tiger. My nickname is Tiger. I don't know if you guys know that. But I wanted you all to understand that they are so welcoming here and so innovative with our new agriculture and our new sun and our new energy building. They're putting in a new nursing facility here for young ladies to get their nursing license and accredited in computer technologies of nursing. And also, we have the new Manoa facility going up to become doctors, etc. Your world can be explored through the university and education. I promise you. Covet this. Thank you. Mahalo. Hi, everybody. Jerry Metcalf back here at the university. We've been extended time here in this nice boardroom in which I'm used to working out of. I wanted you all to know that what we assume the salary to be at $65,000 for a common council member, I'm really trying to do everybody a favor because of my earning power and what I've been used to making, which is around $250,000 a year. I'm semi-retired, and I'm willing to go full-time as a common council with respect to each of my citizens in which I represent, which is not just the Kihei constituency of the South Side, the new Maui Riviera, is for the entire county, which includes Malachi. And everybody in Malachi visiting you and everything like that, I love you guys. I want to tell everybody on Lanai, you have a great representative out there. I just wanted to say a good shout-out to everybody out there and a couple of the big new hotels that are going on out there. I have a lot of union friends that are working out there and working their butts off on. I've had to pick them up at the dock and everything like that. I wanted to address and finalize this issue which I was talking about, the GMO initiative, and it doesn't really affect everybody here, but it affects the people in Kihei in regards to my incumbent, Don Koch, in that he had a chance when he went in on the 7/24/14 common council meeting into private session for, I think it was 15 minutes or so, according to the clock when they came out. And he decided to defer. At that time there, or just prior to that, they kind of knew the position in order to save their jobs because if they voted against it, what would happen? If they voted for, some of them think that, oh, this is radical and kooky. It's not. This is not one of those movements. This is serious business of being poisoned or being part of an experiment that we didn't sanction. And it's a public health issue at this time, with me anyways, okay? It soon will be a public issue for many once you understand the culpability of Monsanto and the Sugar Company of laying out dust and everything into your houses every day, okay? And if they aren't, then the air that's coming through of the stuff that's already been fertilized or Roundup that's been put on and being sent to you in the air, in clear air, without the red dust, is still contaminating, and we're ingesting that, okay? Don't forget, you didn't volunteer to sign up for 10, 12, 100, 300, 3,000 times the amount legally applied to you to inhale or ingest in any way in food, air, water, soil. What this means for Don Koch is he had at that time there the issue to speak up and protect his people and go, "I'm against this. I'm for the moratorium. We've got to check out the results." I didn't see that happen on that video that was 7/24/14. That's all I'm going to say on that issue there. I'm going to move on. When we talk about what's going to happen with that issue and the issues that confront us on this island, in case there was, I wanted to show you something which I found it was a great manual. It's called the Maui Yellow Pages. The nice thing about this place, it lays out your... the family disaster kit, evacuation information, in case of an emergency, a guide. But it doesn't say anything about being poisoned or being downwind of Roundup. It doesn't say anything in here about what we're supposed to do. Has anybody been handing out air masks for us or the masks from the hospital? I've been given them three times when I've went there as a suggestion from a doctor on how bad the installation of... the reason I have to use my inhaler. But I've been looking, and I can't find anything. I think we need to address that issue with putting that in here of what happens if what happens, if we're part of that experiment. I also look at by negligence and causation and culpability to all history. We understood what happened when the contamination went down in the Caribbean, in southern United States with BP. BP came in, fessed up, did the right thing, paid people, fishermen, farmers, agriculture people, and took care of business and rewarded them for the inconvenience and outright disaster that happened. That also happened in Alaska with the Valbes along the ocean of Alaska and for liability. So just so you know, I'm sure Monsanto has an insurance policy. At least I hope so. If they haven't, what feasibility study did they have them to do the experiments to allow them on this island without insurance? That said, I want you to look in your white pages. I want you to go through this and understand that there is not a lot of stuff to protect us on these issues in here. On the other main point of the reasons in which you should consider electing me is I will be devoutly on the water issue. The water meters, I happen to have called Badger Meter in Wisconsin. The meters can be picked up for $25, and then there's a cost of, if we buy less or whatever, of $2,000, $3,000, $5,000, and $10,000 point breaks. So I just saved the county a lot of money on that. And on the installation and on labor to install such water meters, which I don't know if they're good or bad according to what is in the news. If you understand what that means to you, is that they're going to be charging you or metering you on your water, which isn't your water according to the Sugar Company or Alexander Baldwin. It's our water. We should be selling it to them, and we should be metering them. Somewhere this got mixed up. We'll be handling that in my administration. And I hope we can bring this to fruition to some other things, okay? I want you to understand that there might be a conflict of interest in some of the council members' opinions and attitudes and election motives in this election. I have none. I have nothing to win, nothing to gain, in fact, basically, a salary decrease. I want you all to know that at one time, people thought radicals, and this was an alarmist, and everything like that. But history says that we're patriots, and if we take a stand in this. I looked at an article that was in the paper, it says, "Encourage crazy and invest in power of ideas." Now, this is some reason in which you should vote for me, but not my key reasons. That I'll get to. That's why I want you to keep tuned to the station and the editing and what Jason Schwartz is going to do regarding the fortitude of this videotape for you, okay? What sets... I believe in the power of ideas. What sets America apart from the rest of the world is our unique capacity to generate novel ideas for social and technological innovation. Jobs, Gates, Edison, visionary geniuses on the forefront of technological inability to ideulate and the courage to execute their ideas. I have courage, and I have ideas. They were unafraid to challenge convention and norm. I am one of those. They were never content with what they achieved, never sat... They were never content with what they achieved, never satisfied, nothing was good enough. I want to present things, I want to make things better. But until we have us running on complete energy of our own making, that's free, from geo, from sun, and immediately conversion from diesel fuel and being dependent upon the Arabs to being transferred to natural gas, I think this is an immense thing that must be done, and the cost and the amount of free natural gas in the Pacific Rim to us, the United States and Canada, is completely cost-effective. But being dependent on diesel fuel, which started off at $26 a barrel, and is now at, I believe, $132 a barrel. I mean, and we're subject to whatever's going on in the Middle East, and we all know what's happening over there regarding Iran, Iraq, the whole Middle East is on fire with Syria, et cetera. And I feel sorry for the Jewish people and the religions of Muslim, in that the effects of this is ridiculous, especially after our investment in there. And if you want to quickly understand how I perceive this, I don't think we should ever go to war, ever again, without good reasons for the United States' interests. So, I back what Ms. Roz Baker has said, and also what Colleen has said, Hanabusa. We should never go to war again, unless it's in our interest, and we should never deal out the kind of money and put ourselves in debt, as it was. That said, ultimately, we say to each other that work is to take something and revolutionize it. We're in an evolution-revolution on this island at this point. You have to understand, we're facing a monobal cost for energy to the citizens. Corporate America doesn't cost it, it's a write-off to them, they don't care what they get built out of it. That's why we have to switch the type and let them pay from our free natural resources, which are fruit, vegetables, water, land, soil, the limited ability to have that, and clean. And I mean very clean to what we determine is the standard for clean in regards to air consumption, soil use, water use, and consumption. Having to do with the ridiculous assumption that we're running out of water when Monsanto and anybody expanding to the southeast on the new Kula Road that'll be put in, we're going to need a distillation plant sooner or later. We might as well get it out of Monsanto before we sue them and have them pack up their bags and leave the island. We need a distillation plant in, and also the sugar company can pay for that. I've seen their accounting, they have lots of money to do so, since we make not one cent on anything they do here, okay? And I believe that they're not paying very much money in taxes either. So, a distillation plant should be immediate. Also, having to do with the sewage problem in Lahaina and soon in Kihei with the population, and Waialuku, and in the area of Kahului, we must, if I haven't mentioned it before, convert immediately to a solid waste plant in which we use our solid waste, we call it poop. I'm from Milwaukee, Wisconsin. This is a product, it can be sold. Milwaukee, Wisconsin has a population of 630,000 people. Outward infrastructure of 2 million people, Maui's got 154,000, so we need two sewage plants here that can convert this product to a solid product that's marketable. It's called Malorganite. The patent and the resources and availability through Milwaukee, Wisconsin, I'm sure can be arranged. I want you to understand that we take this, we clean it, it's excellent because it has nitrogen and everything we need for fertilizers. We may not need to use anything such as made from Roundup or anywhere else for fertilizers, okay? Don't think I'm weary, it's a very, very great product, and everybody uses it in their garden. It's the same as Miracle-Gro or Miracle-Gro. Malorganite is a great product. I wanted to bring these little bit of things for freshwater, that's distillation systems, clean water, in that we take back our natural resource and we sell back to the companies that say we have a shortage. We don't have a shortage. It's because they use so much that we have a shortage. The other situation is our sewage, and not having runoff on our mountainsides from erosion and the infectiousness of staff into the ocean, and the affecting factors that are affecting our fisheries offshore and contaminating our reef systems, in which one of our candidates in South Maui, Mr. John Fitzpatrick, brought to my light, which is great, and also Robin Knox. They're environmentalists, they have great, positive approach to what's going on, in which I said in the Kihei meeting, I would hire both of them, or at least ask the mayor to put them on staff, if what they're saying is right, and which I've looked into, and it seems to be right. I don't know if they can handle the business model, because as a councilman, we have to think of fiscalness on the entire budget and covering our core departments and needs of the citizens of this county, which comes down to a business equation, and which comes down to business and jobs creations. I think the plan in which I have that can take college, that can take high school, preschool, and develop this into an educational format to bring you out and keep the brain drained from leaving this island or the state of Hawaii, and have a jobs corps program in which we nurse, we nurture, we incubate, we guide, we mentor these new entrepreneurs, these new college graduates, these new high school graduates, and we take care of that. I mean that we need a preschool program because of what's being learned between 3 and year 7. You have also understand at this time here that we have a great need for computer technologies and management systems. And every business model now is developed upon technologies of the computer and understanding the formats and efficiencies which can be directed. I hope to, and would love to, be involved in the incubator and the computer management systems of each of these different sectors, in which the mayor has set up with the MEO program, also with the Startup Business Center and the Maui Mall, of all the different departments hooking up with the small business administration, et cetera. But taking it to the next step in that with the SBA and the mayor's office at actually grabbing these people and setting up the facility and looking at this and actually acting on something. Now, once we have these technologies of these going on, we advance our technologies in energy that we will learn. Maui will create its own energy policy. Maui will create its own energy sustainability, in that we immediately take us off diesel, we tell MECO to face up, help us, create with us if they want some profitability. We need to bring our megawatt hour cost down. We need energy cost containment immediately. We're paying 46 cents megawatt hour here, it's ridiculous when the mainland's at 11 cents. We're using diesel fuel when we could use natural gas, which burns seven times fold more power, energy, and completely clean. The other things is the recycling of number five unusable containers can be made into a product. Half of our recycled products on this island, we let go and sell at a wholesale middleman distribution center to other corporations which take the profit margin from them. We have to contain this and build a manufacturing center to utilize our recycled goods, because we get to set up a small shop and then expand to a large shop model, and possibly franchise to other countries, other states, other counties, not within Hawaii, but the mainland. I look at this business model technique in the business of marketing and all the different factors and facets in which I've learned, and one of the greatest cosmonauts is having a bar or Sparts bar. I learned hiring, firing, every scenario you can go through, from budgetary restraint to exuberant restraint of unchecked balances to checked balances and making accounting through our bookkeeper at that time, and I believe she's still there, the Alice Betsy. She understood computer system models and containment of costs and transparency, so that the boss and board of directors or common council members or citizens can vote on a budgetary system to maintain the lowest cost in these productive, energy, sustainability, cost-refractive business model environments in which we can create through the mayor's office and incentives to the common council. I want to tell everybody, we have a great crew that have working right now with me in bathroom things on different business operations that I'll be investing in. I want you to understand, to continue this theory that I had on being crazy, some people think I ramble, some people think I go on. I have a precise way of speaking in that if you articulate what I'm saying and apply it, I don't have a chart to pull up with bullet points of each of these, okay? But I will have one on my website of the talking points like Shaka had, of talking points and the reasons that you should vote for me more extensively. But we need jobs on this island. We need to create jobs, we need to sustain jobs. So, sustainability, this doesn't mean agriculture. I want to see part of the agricultural realm for jobs converted from the lowland highlands underneath Pukalani to Paia, to where we grow pineapples, et cetera, that are at least 200 feet above sea level. So, when the water rises, we have sustainability to contain and feed our people that are left on this island, even though we may have to take a canoe from Waialuku over to Pukalani if the seas rise and we'll eliminate Kahului. You have to understand something here. We need that belt in there, so we need to either buy the land or use eminent domain to obtain the land from the sugar companies and Alexander Baldwin, because I want to see rows of grapefruit. I want to see rows of oranges, apples, peas, corn, vegetables, many, many other fruits that we have here. And we find out which one is the hybrid best, we find out which one is developing the best and grows the most. And maybe come and go and pick and choose. But we have to have a little bit of everything to put in our markets at a fair cost. Now, if we can mass produce this and keep the volume cost down, we can sell to us on this island at a cheaper cost, and we can buy it at Safeway, or maybe they'll buy from us, or same with Foodland, or Times. All these food stores are my favorites. I love their produce, I love their meats and everything like that. And you must understand that we have competition coming in from Target, Walmart, Target, Costco, with their new food operations coming full involved. And what you're seeing in the expansions in the different markets that are being involved on the city and this county. I look at this article on being crazy, and we cannot afford to underestimate the power of an idea. I'm giving you some ideas. I've watched different interviews of different council members, and what I've witnessed is that, and especially through Mr. Guzman, which I emulate, Mr. Vic Torino, Ellie Cochran. I like her position on the GMO of no pesticides, but GMOs are good. And that's what I wanted to come around, that what the mayor said, GMOs are not harmful, he may be right. But the pesticides, herbicides, the other compounds that are produced from the M, and this is being taken to an elected initiative. I want to be on that same ballot. If you vote to have the moratorium, and you know that I'll supply jobs, or use the facilities and existing prototype paradigms that our mayor has produced and the governor, we can just round them off and round them up and get rid of Roundup, and we can create our own fertilizers, et cetera, and we can make this a sustainable world, a sustainable county, in which we can be a business model for the rest of the state. Crazy? I think I'm both. I think I'm the only one that's taking a stance here publicly, good or bad. I don't know if this will get out in time for the election, but I want you to know that I'm unpredictable. I don't know how to lose because I win. I'm unknown, except for my name of the Metcalf family, and I hope the love you had for the Ina that he had, for what my father had for Hana, the island, the Ina, our Kiki, the support, the money and philanthropy that he donated, and in which we do, and the Alos, and our family has done for the island. But you've never seen anybody stick up for our county the way I have. I'm ready to go to war for this, and sometimes you have to fess up. I have to say that I have courage. I'm different. I'm not the same old cookie-cut guy. I'm not going to be a loudmouth in the common council sessions either. I will listen. I will do one thing in which I love to hear, in which I heard a couple of the candidates say, that are current incumbents, that they read every bill. And I love what Colleen Hanabusa said, in which she reads every bill. I love reading law. I love reading every decision. I love reading Supreme Court decisions and case law. I love reading referendums, I love reading the insights, that when you vote for me, you know that your choice for a new voice has taken this to the next step, and I will analytically break down this and pump it out to an email to the Maui County site if I'm elected, or on my website, to everybody to understand what each of these bills in which they're doing, in which I read articles out of the newspaper, and then it become definite issues and initiatives to everybody. Otherwise, I don't think they'd print them in the newspaper. A lot of stuff is pretty important to us. So, I look at what we have in the different things in our newspaper. This comes from a long time ago, January 31st. I was getting ready to do some races with my brother in canoeing, and also on the ocean swimming, et cetera, and marathons, and mayor's funds for reelection topped $379,000. I give this guy and our governor nothing but complete kudos. I respect this man so much because he gave me incentive to run for this office, besides a bunch of my friends daring me. I came here for one reason, and that is to bring my, or to run for office, that is to bring my name to the forefront, and in the next couple of years, you'll be hearing from me if I don't fall down from the inhalation of what's being sprayed on us from the Monsanto plant and from the sugar operations on this island. I want you to understand that I cherish that the amount of money he has in his war chest. I came in here to spend around $1,000 to $2,000 my own on this election. I'll be proud to announce at this time here, which you'll see in my ledger, I believe that I've spent around $680,000, $680, $680, I'm sorry. I can't wait till someday I have that kind of a budget, and Jason's laughing at me, because that would be like the mayor budget or a run for president or something like that, or senator. I've done things self-contained, I believe in electronic fortitude of our technologies. I believe that you can get to know me pretty well and see my heart words at. And I humbly ask for your vote again, and to be your new voice, and your new choice for a new voice in this election. Next, if we look at the newspaper here, I look at what I've been reading here of final debates over taxes. We've done a great job with getting through the next phase of our taxes, a cut for property taxes, and a loophole we could basically give people to lower taxes. We have to have more incentive for affordable housing. I think that the affordable housing areas, we have to mandate and referendum that not only affordable housing through the HUD program be addressed, but also the key issue is to each developer through the Maui law, the Maui Home Rule Law that we create, in that there must be affordable rentals. That is the key, because we have to understand that besides the 38,500 people that work on this island, do you understand that only half of them own homes and the rest rent? So, this is an affordable housing issue. It's having a good job to be able to have a credit FICO rating, to be able to get a loan to buy a house, or having grandparents or parents that have enough money to loan you. But although interest rates are great, there's nothing to help the working man that works on an hourly wage or a small salary in a management position without ownership to go out there and have a rental at an affordable cost. Now, for people that are disadvantaged, and I'm talking the people that have eye problems, that have drug addiction problems, that have criminal backgrounds, et cetera, we have to have a system put in place to take the criminals coming out of our county jails and have an incentive program to wipe their records clean if they don't violate more, and they go through an incentive program for education. And what I mean by that is, off the bat, I saw articles in the paper that have to do with us picking up garbage at our garbage sites and dumps and stuff like that. Why isn't that being done by our county criminals that are at our county jail? That's a great incentive to get them out, and also get them some air, and make them accountability. You run away, you're done. You're going to get another charge on you. But if they work out and they pass the security check to get out and do different work, we have definitely a calling, and I do a shout-out to the mayor and our common council members now, and the future ones, and our senators, et cetera, to incorporate prison labor and county prison penal labor into the equation of jobs. It's job training. For some of the jobs are mundane and stupid, or hard, or not hard. But the fact of the matter is, no one likes to do those, and we can put that as a penal device to create good attitude and make it to the next job. And the next job gets you out to go to school. And before you know it, we're developing and taking our recidivism rate down, and we won't have a real reason to have a county jail. And if we do have a county jail, it'll be on a minimum, the same with our prison systems, to have people on collars and accountable to their probation agents. I don't know what to say. I feel like I'm in a board meeting. You have to understand that things come and go, people come and go. You have to look at vibrance, you have to look at who you want for a leader. You want to know who's going to go to bat for you. You want to know who's going to put the gloves on. I'm one of those guys. Our incumbent, our other candidates, female, male, I don't know if they have it. I got some guns, I'm willing to go to bat, and by me, by that, by running the rules, following the rules, and understanding what the government asks from me. But I want you to know that I will take care of fiscal response take care of fiscal responsibility by reading everything and then voting from my heart on the consensus and by my conscience of what you've mandated that we need in Kihei and in all the little communities, all in this beautiful county, in Molokai, Wanai, from Paiera to Hana to Waileku, to Napali, to Lahaina, to the new little village and town that's about to come, and that's Alawu, Alawulu. Jason, how do I say that?
Oluwalu.
Alawulu. And I look at that as being a new venture for entrepreneurs and business expansion, one of the businesses that are successful. I'm going to end with this because I'll be updating this. But I just came across something I wanted to show you. Can you zoom in on this? I don't know if the picture does anything, but you can tell by the picture of me in the video that I've lost a lot of weight. I'm about to lose ten to fifteen pounds, maybe twenty pounds, by the final election, which the taxpayers will pay twenty percent less of sixty-five thousand dollars, which basically comes down to almost an eighteen thousand dollar savings to them on my salary to work for you. I'll consider it volunteer service and public service without a hitch. That's what dedication and commitment is to public as a public person that has a responsibility to represent the constituents of South Maui and Wailea, McKenna, et cetera. This is my girlfriend Katie. She's the love of my life. She's completed me, in that the motivation that I get from her every day in running this election and trying to get my reports into the Maui News, because they're going to do an article on me finally, they're going to correct the things they did wrong and accusing me of some dumb stuff. And we'll be able to put the thing on that I'm yelling foul on some things that went wrong with the election, in that what I noticed that wasn't done to actually report on me, also wasn't reported on Robin Knox, also wasn't reported on Mr. Fitzpatrick. And I saw a lot of favoritism go towards our incumbents. But that can be remedied by you making a good choice and listening to what you see. This is my sweetheart, and I consider her a Maui bombshell. And you'll be seeing the new bikini line come out. I want you to know that I really care about everybody. And the family that she has is right here. I don't have a mother and father no more. I have the Ina and Hana and here on this island of all my friends and everybody on Facebook and on electjerrymetcalf.org. I appreciate it. But this is my father now, Katie's father. And this is her mother who's going to be, they're both being, they're going to be eighty and are coming here in October. And I'd like to be on that ballot running so they could be proud of me. And you'd see a new buck coming against Mr. Don Koch. I don't know if I'll beat him, but I'm going to give it a heck whirl when to do so. But I want to be in that top two. So I look from all the candidates in which I'm endorsing in different elections around the island to give their votes up if I pledge my votes for you. So watch on my endorsements and go to my website to find out who they are. And the announcements coming on your emails, if you're a candidate, of what I'm going to do for you to get you elected if you vote for me. Thank you very much. Thank you from the University of Hawaii, Kahalui. I really appreciate your time today. God bless you. God bless Maui. God bless Hawaii. And God bless the Green Bay Packers. Good night.